Thursday, June 20th, 2019, regular monthly meeting to order. At this time, I would like for you to stand for a moment of silence. And afterwards, Mr. DeAndre Barnes will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the school board mission statement. Amen. Ms. Barnes?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with the nation in God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Mr. Barnes?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is attendance. Board members, please indicate your attendance by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
All members are present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for this evening. You've had an opportunity to review the agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Here are our discussion. Board members indicate your approval by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the student representative report.
Good evening, Chairman Parent. Mr. Patillo, Dr. Bracy members of the school board. Excuse me in advance if I'm squinting when I look. I don't have my glasses, so I really can't see. So the first thing I did this past month was attend the Boss Authors and Book Club book signing. Students with an incarcerated parent participated in a program that allowed them to complete all the steps of the writing process and actually publish a book. Their book is available on Amazon. I have a copy with me if anyone would like to see it. Next, I had the chance to record with the Hampton and Norfolk Student Representatives this like a week or so ago. That episode of Portsmouth Fitness will be up sometime next week. I also attended the Stop the Violence Rally at I.C. Norcom with the rapper Young Jeezy where I had the opportunity to actually accept a check on behalf of the Woodrow Wilson High School, FCC LA. That was a very interesting event. A lot of my friends liked it, so I hope, hope that we can continue to do things like that in the future. Some important things, important and exciting things happened in the school division. We had the CTE signing day where students were able to receive CTE certificates from different courses they had completed. Four of our students actually had the chance to sign a contract, so congratulations to them. We also had the athletic signing day where students revealed the colleges they planned to attend and accepted athletic scholarships. We had academic award ceremonies throughout the division from elementary to high school level. Students received honor certificates, perfect attendance awards, principal of the month award. Ooh, that's wrong. Student of the month award.
Principals will say it like that anyway.
At the high school level, students received scholarships, honor cords, honor ribbons, and that's also where the high school students received their TCC hoods for completing the dual enrollment slash first college program. Another important event we had in the school system was graduation. We had students graduate from sixth grade. We had pre-K or kindergarten graduations, and we had high school graduation, of course. I'm happy to report that all three high schools had $28.7 million in academic scholarships, so that's exciting. And then lastly, for the announcements, this summer, I'm going to look into doing a special edition of Portsmouth Fitness with the new student reps so I can kind of pass the torch and show them the ropes. And then finally, if you look in front of you, you will find a book and a card that I printed to you guys.
Very sweet card.
That's it. Thank you.
And if you will remain there. Oh, Miss Heinz?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to address you as Woodrow Wilson graduate, Ms. Bellamy. Thank you so much for your work this year, for your tireless education of student life and for your education of our lives, to your peers and to your leaders that are coming up under you. Thank you for being that voice. Thank you for being there to explain and to be an ambassador for us to them and be an ambassador for them to us. We certainly have taken what you have given us and we've run with it. But I just wanted to say, congratulations, graduate. I wish you well in your future endeavors, and don't be a stranger. Come back to see us. And Dr. Nguyen, I was wondering if we can buy copies of those Boss Author books for all of our schools so that those students who have written and who have published and who are now published authors can have their work read by other students so that maybe they can inspire and help out other students as well. But graduate, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
You have been a joy to watch flourish over your time here. At some point, you should go back and watch the very first video that you did. You didn't like public speaking, and look at you now. Our student representative program is partly one of those programs that helps flourish our next generation of people. So I'm not going to miss you because I'm going to see you, so that's not going to be an issue. But you have grown, you have shown grace, and you have been an example for our next student representative to follow. So I appreciate everything that you've done for Portsmouth Public Schools. I appreciate you being the example of what positivity comes out of Portsmouth Public Schools, and I can't wait until you come back and show everyone how awesome Portsmouth Public Schools has prepared you for your next college life. So thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I just wanted to say congratulations, Ms. Bellamy. I remember your first school board meeting. I was sitting here thinking, I'm not being negative or anything, but I think, is she going to make it through? And I was thinking, breathe, breathe, just breathe. But you've done well, you've grown, and you can even tell that you've learned a lot. The one thing that I've always appreciated with you is that you never was scared to take a stand, especially on an issue that you felt strongly about. And that came across, and that was very passionate as well. So I wish you well, live well, and just remember what you've learned here and apply it to future success. And thank you for the book. I'm going to use it this summer. I was going to go buy one, but I don't have to now. And the card, it means a lot. So good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Tanaya, congratulations, graduate. You're about to beho- I meant, no, you'll BS you. I'm not going to do that. No, congratulations on being a Trojan. I had to throw that joke in. We're all the same. But I'm very proud of you and just everything that you've done. Thank you for your input. Thank you for your voice for our students. And just always remember, leaders don't always win fights, but they win wars, and wars create change. And take the advice that you gave us on our notebooks. Make ideas happen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Reverend Delo?
Tanaya, I want to congratulate you, but also to say how impressed and amazed I am of you. You're not a robot, and you did such a phenomenal job even going through and enduring your own stress and tough times just being a student in their senior year of school. You excelled in that, and you didn't miss a beat being our student representative as well. Your courage and willingness to take a stand for what you believe in was impressive and amazing to me, and if I can ever be of any assistance to you, you know, just reach out to me and I'd be happy to be there in the way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't see people. I'm squinting.
When we get you to take, I said, it wasn't over.
Yeah, it didn't.
Tanaya Bellamy?
For exemplary service as student representative on the Portsmouth City School Board for the 2018-19 academic school year while enrolled as a senior at Woodrow Wilson High School. And it's signed by the chairman of the school board and the superintendent, and we congratulate you, and Godspeed. We're so proud of you, and you've done an outstanding job allowing the students to communicate and how you've been able to communicate with them and giving the school board feedback. Now, you don't have to worry about all the pizza, because now we're going to be introducing some new people, and they'll have to worry about pizza, okay? So congratulations to you, and Godspeed, and God love you. Thank you so much.
Now, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce to you, the next item on the agenda is consideration of a student representative and an alternate to the school board for 2019 and '20. Reverend Patillo and Mrs. Williams were on the interview team, and they interviewed students. And I'm happy to announce, from Norcom High School, Nala Deans. Would you please stand? She will be the student representative. And Essence Johnson, is Essence here? Essence Madoff? She will be the alternate. Would you like? Oh, I'm sorry. She's from Wilson. Essence is from Wilson, and Nala is from Norcom High School. Very good. So we're, and your parents are here tonight? Please stand up. Congratulations. Ms. Dunn, is your parents here tonight? Please stand up. Now, I'm not going to embarrass you this evening, because after our orientation the other day, you can't be embarrassed, but would you like to come, both of you come to the podium and just make some comments? Oh, sure. You're not shy, I tell you. You're going to be. And you're not bashful at all, neither one of you.
Well, I just want to say, thank you, everyone, for introducing us and letting us have this opportunity. It's a great one, it's a big one, and I'm really excited for this school year, to be working with everyone and try to make it the best school year that I have yet.
Yep, absolutely. Now, assume that you've memorized this book by, had all that memorized, so you know all your things. Essence, would you like to make a comment?
Good evening. Just thank you for this opportunity, like Nala said. I'm excited for what is to come, and I can't wait to see what's going to happen.
Very good. And a lot's going to happen, and you're going to both do a great job. Thank you very much. Welcome. Now, board?
Motion for approval.
I was just, let them sit down. We're going to get, motion's been made. Second, do we have any discussion? I don't know if Mrs. Williams and Reverend Patillo want to make any comments. You're good. All right. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Now, both of you, it's official. No going back. All right, this time, we'll have the monthly report, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Nguyen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patillo, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. This is our June curriculum and instruction report. We had a lot of exciting things, and you've already heard about the breaking obstacles to seek success. And tonight, in addition to our board docs report, we're going to hear about our wonderful programs from career and technical education and dual enrollment. So we have Mr. Craig Hill and Ms. Katina Barnes here with us to talk about all the wonderful things that we're doing with this rich partnership.
Good evening, everyone. Chairman Parent, school board members, Superintendent Dr. Bracy. I'm so excited to be here tonight. I feel like I almost want to be talking to you in our living rooms. It's such exciting news that I'm going to give you, and every one of you should be excited about the numbers that I'm going to give you. It shows the success of these programs that's going on. The picture you see in front of you, obviously, is the dual enrollment program. It's an umbrella, if you think about it, if you think about it. First college, early college, CTE, that's the big umbrella that overlaps everything involved. But this picture kind of morphs it all together, because those students are to be welding students, some of those students are first college students, some of those students are going to be college students next year, some of them are going into the shipyard, and then some of them are going back to TCC. So that picture kind of wraps up everything that the dual enrollment program is about. So I just love the picture. I think it's a great representation of what's going on. It was a project that they made for Woodrow Wilson High School, and they also did it for Churchland High School. So that picture in itself just makes you smile. So hopefully, you realize that, you see that, and you see the success of the program, because the numbers I'm getting ready to show you are going to make you smile even more. Here's the overview. Can you believe it's been 14 years? I think the program started off with less, I don't know, in the teens, and here we are at 215 students in the first college program alone. It is just growing. And then if you look at that, the average of the GPA is 3.0. That's the highest it's ever been in 14 years.
Wow.
Then if you look at the credits that we have completed, that's the highest it's ever been in 14 years. So it's just exciting to see that news, to see that we're going in the right direction. We had the six governors' medallion recipients. We had over 68 early college students, as you can see there. And I want to make sure you understand that. That's the college academy, which is our ninth through 10th graders. And Ms. Barnes is going to speak a little bit more on that in a moment. So that's the kind of the pipeline that's leading up. That's one of the road maps that are coming up through the program. Then we have the 16 first college college academy students that are 11th graders. So next year, they will be in the first college program. So it's just continuing on. We're getting them in the ninth grade. And then we had 15 welding students. Two of those received a certificate in maritime welding. A couple of those students signed with some employers that some of you were able to attend. So we're really excited about the program highlights, and I think they speak for themselves. This one kind of just breaks it down a little bit. If you notice, the GPAs, the 2.0, we had the highest up there at 193, where last year it was 172. We have, if you noticed, students that were less than 2.0, it dropped down to 22 total. Those numbers just don't pop on a page, folks. Those numbers come from putting in different types of strategies throughout the school year when they're over there. We also make sure we monitor their attendance. We work with these students, and our hard work is paying off by the numbers that you're seeing, and that's across the board. If you also look at our GPA for 4.0, we had 16 students that were 4.0 out of the 215. That is, it just speaks for itself, like I say. This is the breakdown of the race and gender. If you noticed, the orange would be Churchland. Of course, the maroon is Norcom, and then the blue is Wilson. Which kind of pops out at me the most is our numbers for African-American males and females. Those numbers have increased drastically, if you look at that. We went from 69 last year, black females, to 99 this year in the program. We went from 30, I believe it was, last year of black males, we went from 32 to 50. That has been an area that we have been struggling with, as you all know, for the last few years. So that number is increasing and is showing great signs. And I think that's paying off from just getting in the schools, making sure that everyone is aware of it. And as long as we keep moving in that direction, I think we'll be in good shape. And then we have a pie there, just kind of gives you a little bit more of a, how it looks. But we want to keep that up. We want to keep moving forward with all of our students in all the schools. We still have some areas we want to increase in one of our schools, and we're going to keep doing that. But we're going in the right direction, and with your help in promoting it like you're doing it, I think we're going to be okay. This next slide, I'm going to turn it over to my partner here over at TCC. You know, it's all about collaboration with our stakeholders, and the collaboration with TCC has been one shining example of success. And Ms. Barnes works over there at TCC, and she's kind of like the counterpart with me, and she works with these students also. And it's a full-time job for both of us to stay on top of these students. But she's going to show you some things with the early college that I think you're going to be excited about, Ms. Barnes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board chair, Mr. Parent, Vice Chair, Mr. Basilio, Dr. Bracy, Superintendent, and the board members, good evening. It is a true joy to be here and hearing all the great stuff that Portsmouth is doing. Very proud to be one of the partners. On behalf of TCC, we say thank you for the continued partnership that we have. So I have the pleasure of talking about the early college academies, and as Mr. Hill has indicated, early college academy is the opportunity for your ninth and your 10th graders to start in a program that they can work towards one of three associate's degrees. They, this year, we saw 68 students, which is a, that's a pretty big number. When we started in 2017, we started with 11 students. And each semester, we have increased, and this year, we are seeing, we had enrolled 68 students. And that number does include your ninth and your 10th grade. For the first college scholars graduate academy, some people tend to get those confused with first college, but that is the 11th grade. Students start in the 11th grade, and they work towards a general education certificate, which is 31 credits. We just started, this is the first year that we had students enroll, we had 16 students in that program. What's interesting, we, the 11th grade cohort, you will find students in that cohort who may not have been ready in the ninth or 10th grade, may not have heard about it in the ninth or 10th grade, and fortunately, there is another opportunity. So if, you know, there's an entry point, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So it's just a wonderful opportunity that our Portsmouth students have the opportunity to enter in every grade level. So total for our early college and our first college students, we saw 84 students this year. So what a pleasure that is. I love going to the schools and talking about this opportunity that our Portsmouth students have. One thing that I do want to point out in the chart for the GPAs, this GPA chart is a little different from the first GPA chart that you saw. That chart represents only first college, this represents your early college academy and your first college scholars academy. So what I do want to point out, we had 40% of those students that we just mentioned fall into the range of the 4.0. That's pretty good. That's pretty good. 40% of those students fall into the 4.0 range. 27% fall into the 3.0 to 3.49 range. I do want to say, there is, if you look at the chart, I want to just reiterate, the total for the GPA 4.0 says zero. That's incorrect. Obviously, that's not correct. So I did make the corrections, I'm not sure if we can make corrections on the original documents, but that, there's a mistake there. It's not zero, okay? I do want to say also that we had six individuals who received the governor's medallion. The governor's medallion, this indicates that six students received their associate's degree.
Wow.
And that's super awesome. Yes, yes. And two of our individuals from Wilson High School earned their career study certificate in maritime welding, and those individuals were recognized at the signing day as well. So what a great thing that you all are doing. Thank you again for the continued partnership, and we look forward. We have already started receiving applications for new students for 2019, '20. Thank you.
Ms. Barnes and Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you, both of you, for your hard work. It's great, I mean, this is a great report. If you would do us a favor, if you will send us this report, because I want to use it as bragging rights, and there was not a copy in board docs, so if you would send it to our clerk so that she can get this out to all the board members, because we want to use this, because this is great information we need to let the public know. Thank you. I'm going to start with, what? I don't have any board docs. All I have is Dr. Nguyen's. Oh, excuse me. I didn't go down further than that. My apologies. I got it. Thank you. All right. Ms. Heinz?
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Hill, Ms. Barnes, thank you so much. I do appreciate it. The CTE signing day was wonderful. It's one of those things that I look forward to. I'm going to look forward to every single year, because our students and their families need to know where they're going, you know? It's nice to be able to walk out and have something in hand that you can do to help support, to support or to supplement while you're doing your next step, you know? But to have something going out. But my question was really for Dr. Nguyen, is how much are we talking about this at middle school? Because a lot of these, a lot of these programs are going to start with those middle school students coming in, and how well-versed are our high school counselors? Because I know my family member was very grateful for Mrs. Barnes's help in order to get her on the right track, because it wasn't necessarily the right information that was given out at the high school. So my concern is, how are we doing in our house to promote our students? So I'm just, I'm curious as to what's going to go, what our next step is to get all of our students and their families.
So I will say that this year, I put a lot of miles on my pumps. I, not bypassed, but we also started in the elementary. So I had the opportunity of going out to John Tyler, Hodges Manor, Simondsdale. We reached out to every elementary school, but we received an invitation to not all of them, but some of them. But I went to talk with fifth and sixth grade classes. That was a treat. I had the honor of going to gym classes and playing some basketball and volleyball and talking about dual enrollment, talking about dual enrollment with our guidance counselors in both elementary and middle, as well as high school. Because we do realize, once you get to the ninth grade, it can be too late. Because what we know, the eligibility for early college, students have to have completed Algebra I, geometry, and another high school credit. That has to be, they have to know that in the sixth grade. A lot of parents don't know that their SOL scores determine what math they go into. So it was great to talk to parents about that. I want to also mention PTA meetings, access, parent nights. So any, any event that a school will invite us to, I'm there.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes. And I know you have our guidance counselors.
Absolutely.
Is it a continuing process?
Yes. And we, we are planning to have a guidance coordinator or a school counselor coordinator join us in very soon, and that person will be responsible for coordinating all of these types of activities for the school counselors. And so we know that there is a piece there that we have to get this information out, but I think we've done a phenomenal job. And I will say that this is a very unique and rich relationship that we have that not every school division has for their students, and we are leaders and trailblazers when it comes to dual enrollment. So kudos to Dr. Bracy and Dr. Morehouse, Dr. Woodhouse and her staff and our staff for making that happen.
Very good. Reverend, Reverend Patillo?
Thank you, Mr. Parent. I was going to also comment on the miles you put on your pumps this year also, for going to our elementary schools, sometimes twice, to talk to our students and also the parents. And I will say that I don't, I don't see a reason why she shouldn't receive an invitation from every elementary school when the email is sent out. She should receive an invitation from every elementary school, and especially because there are certain classes you have to take in middle school in order to get on that track to finish your associate's degree value in 12th grade. So thank you so much.
All right. Ms. Heinz?
Yes, thank you. I know, I believe it was this meeting last year where we actually handed out-
and also the parents. And I will say that I don't, I don't see a reason why she shouldn't receive an invitation from every elementary school.
She should.
When the email is sent out. She shouldn't receive an invitation from every elementary school. And especially because there are certain classes you have to take in middle school in order to get on that track to finish your associate's degree value in 12th grade. So, thank you so much.
All right. Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. I know, I believe it was this meeting last year where we actually handed out the tracks, where it was if you're an incoming freshman or an incoming sophomore, are those posted on our website so that parents have access to them? I, I haven't looked, I'm, I'm just asking so that if anybody is interested that's listening can go and find it. But as a, as a parent and as a student, I mean, even when I was in college, I went to see my, my, my person that signed off on my, and I just had the checklist that was going, you know? And so if I just put that checklist on the refrigerator, and I know that sounds like very old fashioned, but you've got to see it every day so that you can do it, even, even for students who are thinking about it in fifth and sixth grade, oh, I've got to get to that algebra class, because I've got to get to this geometry class, or I need to get that foreign language credit done so that I have that time in my junior and senior year that I can go. But I just want to make sure that they're available. And, and parents, use them as a checklist. Students, use them as a checklist to get your stuff in order. Thank you.
Yeah, they're there. And also with the profile of a graduate, we're down to the fourth grade now of career and technical education in Perkins. So we're making sure they're aware of it with the career awareness.
Mr. Lamb?
I just want to add something to what kind of speaks to what you just said, Ms. Duncan Hines. I was actually out at Norfolk Centerra Hospital, and I've heard this voice, "Hey, hey, hey." So I turned around, it was a student that I saw at John Tyler, and he said, "I passed my SOL. I'm going algebra." So it does, it does speak volumes. So I, again, anytime that a school will invite me, I'm there.
Thank you.
Yes. I just got a real quick question. And you've kind of mentioned a couple things that you did differently, such as the going out to elementary schools and so forth. And the numbers don't lie. I mean, there, there's definitely an uptick in numbers. So could you elaborate just on what were a couple things that you did differently this year that seemed to have worked that maybe we hadn't done previously? Or what did we change up?
I think the biggest thing is that we've expanded the program.
Okay.
And in expanded, in expanding the program, we've given students in lower grade levels more opportunities to begin early. And making sure that we get the word out, building a stronger partnership and collaboration with TCC, where Ms. Barnes has actually been a very active member of our school community in going out and meeting with students, meeting with parents, and making them aware of it. But the main reason is that we've opened it up for more students to have opportunities to attend, starting as early as ninth grade and preparing them as early as fifth and sixth grade. Okay?
Shuame?
Thank you.
Ms. Shuame?
Thank you, Al.
Hold up, wait a minute, we still have questions?
Quick question. Do you attend any of the orientations? You do? Okay. And the only reason why I ask, I know two years ago, when I went to Churchland Middle, a lot of parents weren't aware, and that would have been a huge asset if someone would have been there to kind of let them know and guide them as to what to look forward to prior to their child going into high school. So I was just asking because of my own past experience. So that would be awesome if, if you could.
You're talking about middle school?
Yes.
Okay, we can make arrangements for people to attend that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All right. Zackinson?
And just to, and just to piggyback on Ms. Shuame, are you guys going to do the open house this year, the CTE open house?
We always do.
All right, awesome. And great job.
We do that every year.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good.
I had a question, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like much to go on.
I did. All right, wait a minute. Ms. Barnes and Ms. Hill?
That's okay.
I have a quick question. The first question is, for the students that came out with associate degrees, what was the cost of that to the student? An estimated cost of that to the student?
It would depend upon the student's situation. Some students pay a small fee of $45 per credit hour.
Twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty per hour. And then if a student qualifies, there is no cost.
And I wanted you to kind of
Right.
Talk to that, because a lot of times, people are discouraged from things because they think there's an enormous cost to it. This is something that we're offering to our students at a very reduced rate.
Right.
If a rate at all. And I think that's a big component of making sure we start to push that narrative, that you could actually come out of high school with an associate's degree at a very reduced rate. And sometimes money leads that discussion, because people don't want to think that they're going to come out of high school with possible student loan debt. So I just wanted to touch on that. And then the second portion of that is, is there a cap on the number of students that can attend First College or the Early College Academy or the First College Scholars Academy as long as they meet that criteria?
We don't have a cap on our end, and I'm not aware that TCC does. It's open to, to all of our students. It would be ideal if we could have all students earn an associate's degree while they're earning the diploma. That would be the goal.
Let's try to double that at least for next graduation there. Thank you so much for the work that you do. I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I'm sorry, Ms. Allen, I didn't see that pop up.
Ms. Barnes says that there are 27 students in the pipeline for next year. So we may more than double that.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, and board members, at earlier meeting, you were briefed on the Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV grant application. What is your pleasure, please? Second. Motion's been made. In second, please make your, any discussion, hearing no discussion, make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's, it's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is by electronic vote at the consideration of the Code of Student Conduct 10 Book 2019-20. There was a discussion last week about the Student Code of Conduct. Do you have any, before we vote, do I have a motion? Motion for approval.
Second.
Been made. In second, any discussion, hearing, seeing no discussion, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is electronic vote, consideration of VHSL membership application for Churchland, IC Norcom, and Woodrow Wilson High School for the 2019-20 school year. Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. In second, any discussion, hearing no discussion, board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Thank you. Now, the next item is recognition presentation. The first one will be Ms. Patricia Carroll from ACT SO, ACT SO Portsmouth Students. Is Mrs. Carroll here?
No.
Is Mrs. Carroll here? Are the students here?
Okay.
Ms. Williams?
Mrs. Mrs. Carroll did call, she called last week, and she, I believe she said the students that were supposed to be recognized had engaged, they were gone off to some college program or something, and she didn't think. But she said she was going to check back and get with Dr. Bracy, but I assume they are off on their programs.
Okay, thank you. Next item is IC Norcom High School's Class III State Champions. Dr. Bracy, introduce them.
Yes. And this is the moment we've been waiting for, since Mr. P was with us in the winter for our indoor state champion. So he's back here this evening to talk about the athletes and their performance this past spring.
All right, good evening to all board members, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, Dr. Bracy. I'd like for the athletes, administrators, and coaches from IC Norcom to please come forward.
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Jones and Dr. Shepherd for being here, for taking their time out. The first thing that I'm going to do is, we're going to recognize the athletes who were state champions for Class III, right, in track and field. All right? The first one I want to recognize is the four-by-one relay team from IC Norcom High School. These are the same four young men who actually won the indoor four-by-two championship. And the good thing about this group is all four of them are returning next year. So we're expecting bigger and better things.
All right.
First, I do have Coach, Coach Lisa here, all right? And she is, she's very good at working with these sprinters, all right? I have Jamari Danielle Gray in recognition as a member of the 2019 Class III State Champion in the four-by-100 meter relay team at the State Outdoor Track and Field Meet during the 2018-19 academic session while enrolled as a freshman at IC Norcom High School.
That's awesome.
We all, we also have Maurice Outen in recognition as a member of the 2019 Class III State Champion in the four-by-100 meter relay team at the State Outdoor Track and Field Meet during 2019-18-19 academic session while enrolled as a junior at IC Norcom High School. The other two young men, one had an emergency tonight, a family emergency, that would be Demonte Dunlap. He's a sophomore. He's coming back. I'd like to give him a handful. Here's a commissary. And the other one is Karan Prunti, and he's right now in Tennessee visiting a college that, on a football visit. So he has quite a few offers. We have a young lady that you guys, you saw her in indoor. She won the 55-meter hurdles indoor. In outdoor, she won the 100-meter and 300-meter hurdle championship. Her name is Jasmine Gilliam. I'd like to give her a hand. She, her family moved to Northern Virginia, and they took her with her after school, so she's no longer in the Hampton Roads area.
Oh.
But she is going to be running track at Virginia State University. So you guys.
All right.
Anybody want to come down and photo op? Can we get the principals to get in there? Give it to them. Next, I would like to have the, the coaches, administration team from Churchland High School, and the athletes to please come forward.
Just a minute. Ms. Atkinson, did you want to address the Norcom?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
A general question from Ms. P. So I know when high school, like basketball, football, win a state championships, they get a ring or some type of hardware. What do the track players get if they are?
Same thing.
They, they do get a ring?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yes. All right, y'all come on up. All right, athletes, y'all go forward. All right. We have here Mr. Mike Whittington. He is the athletic director. I have Armani Harper, Quentin Harper, the coaches, and Terry Allen. These are the people who are working with our, our athletes at Churchland. Churchland, I want to give them credit because they have 100% attendance tonight. All right, I want to start out by letting you know, the, one of the athletes, two of the athletes that you're looking at, you saw also in indoor. One of them would be Amia Denae Williams, and she is in recognition as a Class IV State Champion in the girls' shot put, all right, at the State Outdoor Track and Field Meet during the 2018-19 academic session while enrolled as a senior at Churchland High School. And I proudly say that she will be going to Norfolk State behold. Next up, this young man right here, he's a hurdler. I think he told his coaches, he won the region meet that we held at Wilson, and I think he told the coaches that he wasn't going to stop until he won a state title. So I give him credit on that. In recognition, DeQuan Marquis Felton, in recognition as a 2019 Class IV State Champion in the 300-meter hurdles at the State Outdoor Track and Field Meet during the 2018-19 academic session while enrolled as a senior at Churchland High School. DeQuan will be going to, once again, Norfolk State on a football scholarship, where he'll be playing for the Spartans. All right, congratulations. Last and certainly not least, okay, next we have Leila Marie Anderson. This young lady, you saw her in indoor, because she won the 55 meters and the 300-meter title indoor. In outdoor, she did even better than that. She is, we recognize Leila as the 2019 Class IV State Champion in the girls' 100-meter dash, 100-meter hurdles, and 200-meter dash. All right, congratulations. During the 2018-19 academic session while enrolled as a sophomore at Churchland High School. So, that's right. So this young lady won five titles. Not only did she win five titles, she went to the Nationals last week, and in the emerging elite, she placed third in the 100-meter dash
Wow.
out of all the athletes in the country. So we're proud of her, right? This group has a bright future.
Yes.
Ahead of them, and we are very, very proud of this, this group.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, anybody have any questions or want to comment?
Yeah, congratulations.
All right, I want to thank, in front of the athletes, I want to say this. I want to thank the city, the school board for your continued support for athletics in the city of Portsmouth. And I can say this, that, you know, you guys support in Hampton Roads area, second to none, right, including all of the cities, and they're funded formally. So I just want you guys to know that being in Portsmouth, you got it good. All right, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
Lot to be proud of tonight. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of minutes of May 9, 2019, May 23, 2019. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made. In second, any discussion, hearing no discussion, board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is discussion, public comment, non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mr. Sergio Neal.
While he's coming, do you want to read the?
He's the only speaker.
Ma'am?
He's the only speaker.
He's been before the board, so you know you have five minutes.
Yes. Good evening to Dr. Bracy, members of the board, and General Public. My name is Sergio O'Neill. First of all, I'd like to ask in advance that this may take a little bit longer than allotted time, so if you all will allow me the pleasure of having just a couple more moments, I would be greatly appreciative. What I'm going to read tonight is a prepared statement from a retired, from a teacher who decided to leave the division, unfortunately. And she wanted, I was doing some research on teacher morale, and she sent me a letter. This letter starts off that there is an issue that plays education everywhere. Unfortunately, Portsmouth is not exempt for this issue. As a matter of fact, Portsmouth teachers are victimless more than anyone would like to admit or recognize. Administration say that this is not an issue. They don't want to hear the many cases of teacher mistreatment. They will say that teachers need to come forward and speak up, and there will be no retaliation whatsoever. They say that they will have no time for teachers that speak on the basis of anonymity. The administration may actually believe that retaliation doesn't occur, retaliation is real. See something, say something is the catchphrase that holds no truth. The truth is, see something, shut up, and do as you're told, is what we are told to do. At any cost, teachers are expected to shut up and do as you're told. Pretending that cancer doesn't exist in a person whose body is plagued with cancer does not make the person healthy. It makes that person able to accept that they are dying. Without the proper course of treatment, that individual will succumb to the disease. They will. Why bring up cancer? Why bring up this vile disease that ruins the lives of so many people? Because just like cancer, low teacher morale is ruining the lives of so many people. Teachers are the primary victims. Teachers suffer the effects of the disease directly. It does not stop at the teachers. It has an impact on the other staff that teacher come in contact with, students, parents, and the family that the teacher turns home to each and every night. Having a pep rally at the beginning of the year does not strengthen morale. The teachers and staff know exactly why this production is put on, and it is done for the administration to make, to feel better about allowing the teachers to be mistreated. We do not want a pep rally. How about unencumbered planning time? How about allowing us to work in our classroom without interruption? How about we be given a day in the school year where we can work on the mundane repetitive paperwork that makes our academic records? I remember my first four years at the end-of-year meetings with the superintendent, which gave out yellow pens and such. It was a huge deal to have our accomplishments recognized. I counted down each year to my fifth year where I received my very first pen, the five-year pen. My fifth year came, a new superintendent came, and the recognition of time served was gone. That was the beginning of the end for me. The complete disappointment of looking forward to something for so long and not receiving it, it burned into my memory. All the way I've taken was a handshake, thank you, a pen. At the beginning, what I watched, at the beginning of the year, while I watched a strapping gift being given away by wondering why I can't have a paper, why I can't have copy paper. The next year, I was the lucky recipient of a donated Pepsi chair, a chair that I never picked up because I'd rather have one of those flat-screen TVs that they gave out of the year prior, or a ring of copy paper would have sufficed. Teachers are forced to work in a hostile work environment. We're constantly on the receiving end of workplace bullying. Yes, bullying. Bullying by those in power, leaving the teachers completely helplessly. The compliance officer, P A representative, school board officials, yes, some members that sit on the board right now, and the division heads are all complacent in this treatment. I've come to learn that my only advocate is me. I learned my rights. I learned the law. I taught myself all about the rules regarding state and local policies. I knew that the local school board policies bothered employees and human resources. Eventually, I came, I became the person that other educators sought out when they had questions or needed information about their rights. I became more knowledgeable than those local education associates who jobs are protecting certain educators. I became acquainted with the E O C. She deserves rights. Students, all students have a right to a quality education. Their student education is compromised on a delebatious due to inappropriate behavior of one of two. One or two students should not dictate the learning environment of thirty, but it happens across the division. The teachers are given little to no support when it comes to behavior. Severe behavior such as punching a teacher, throwing a laptop, stomping the head of another student, these situations are included at the school where I taught this year. The security guard quit because they did not have the support of the administration. Our security guard was the only safety net. He made us feel safe. I'm one of fourteen teachers from our building who walked away from Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm leaving for last pay and going to pay the costs.
Mr. Neal, your time is up, but board, would you grant him permission to, how much longer do you need?
I have about three more lines, and then I have one personal line.
Is it all right that he finishes? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Why are you asking? Because I'm tired of being unappreciated. I'm tired of disrespect. I am not just a teacher. She has more here, but I won't read it all because I really felt shocked, to say the least. You know, as a person who works in education myself, I, you know, I am not, this is not nothing, nothing directly at Portsmouth. This does not only include Portsmouth, because I've done this to other divisions. I've done this to private schools. But it, it's a, it's a real disheartening thing to hear the state of morale right now, and all we have done to try to rectify that. So I would advise you all to really take a look, a hard look at teacher morale for this upcoming school year, and to start to find out, why are these letters starting to circulate? Because I sat up, and I was, when I got this, and it really hurt my heart. Thank you so much to all, each and every one of you.
One question I have for you. Did that teacher send a copy to our human resource?
That I cannot say because I don't, that's a question I did not ask, but I would be more than happy to ask that question.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers? All right. Next item is board agenda items. Do we have any speakers? All right. The next item is the human resources report. Mr. Ziegler.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patillo, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, since you did ask the question, human resources did not receive a copy of that letter that Mr. O'Neill left read this evening. And just to respond briefly, I will let the board know and have complete confidence that when we receive complaints, anonymous or named, they are all given due diligence and all investigated completely, and appropriate action is taken when necessary, both in terms of correcting situations and ensuring that our employees are not retaliated against. Had that person come to us, we probably could have helped them. Again, I don't know who that teacher is or what school they're discussing, but we do investigate and fully clear all complaints that come to us. So, onto the board report. I would like to take a moment and thank board members for attending our retirement banquet. We had forty-some retirees this year that represented over eight hundred years of service to the city of Portsmouth and the children of Portsmouth, and we congratulate all of them and wish them Godspeed. We are continuing with our walk-in interviews. We had our walk-in, second walk-in interview day yesterday. It got picked up by both, two of the news channels. They came out and interviewed me and interviewed one of our applicants who did a fantastic job with no preparation. In fact, we offered her a job late yesterday afternoon because she was good on the interview and good in the, on the TV as well. Nationally board-certified school counselor that's just moved up, just got married and moved up from North Carolina. So we had twenty-two teacher candidates come in yesterday. We offered probably three or four jobs out of that, or in the process of offering three or four jobs. And we had five bus driver candidates come, which is a little bit low, but we also just had a classified job fair at the beginning of June in which we hired eight bus drivers. And so we'll begin training those when they get back from their conference this summer. So we're excited about these things that are happening, and we're moving forward with filling these teacher vacancies. In your board packet tonight is the transaction report for this month. I would ask the chairman to please entertain a motion to accept the transaction report as presented. Oh, I'm sorry, am I out of order? It's the Pay Plan nine-two?
It's the Pay and Classification Plan.
So the Pay and Classification Plan is presented tonight. I would ask the board to entertain a motion to adopt the Pay and Classification Plan as presented.
Any discussion? And I think what? All right. I don't see any, any lights on. All right, okay. All right, board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is consideration of employee transaction report for June 2019. Motion's been made, and second, Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ziegler, for your reports. I just want to note it that I do have an issue with the transaction report for the employee transaction report. I will be, I don't believe in throwing the baby out with the bathwater, but I do have a concern regarding it.
Okay. Any other, don't see any other lights. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item is budget and planning. Mr. Falk.
Good evening, Mr. Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, school board members, Dr. Bracy. We bring a number of items before you tonight, mainly purchasing-related, procurement-related. The first one is a consideration of the contract for employee health and dental that you got a presentation on earlier this evening.
Board?
Consent vote for agenda items ten point one through ten point six.
What's that? Could you repeat?
Yes, I am.
You didn't get it out before I?
It wasn't a second.
No. Yes. We can do a consent vote. In other words, we're going to vote on all ten point one, two, three, four, five, and six. Reverend Patillo made the motion, and second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I did have a question I wanted to ask. I just couldn't find it in my brain in the Rolodex. However, the consideration of the sole source for Waterford Research, I don't see Dr. Nguyen sitting here. It's listed as a sole source. I was just wondering what the criteria was that we used to move away from iReady and end with Waterford and their programming. So I just, because I'm familiar with iReady, I just wanted to know what was the reasoning behind and what criteria was used to make the decision.
Here's Dr. Nguyen.
I'm sorry. Dr. Nguyen, I had a question about Waterford. And the, the moving away from i, and just because I'm familiar with iReady and most of our, anybody that's been around for five years or so is very familiar with iReady. So I just was curious about the criteria to move away from iReady and into Waterford.
Okay. We've had iReady for the past four years. Actually, we looked at the data for three years, and we looked at usage, and we looked at whether or not it was having a measurable impact on student success. And from all of the reports that we've received, with the amount of money that we put out for it, we've not had maximum usage or even moderate usage from our schools. And we've also not seen any success that we've gotten from the product itself. And so in looking at that and weighing that against the amount of money that we have been investing in iReady and what the professional development that we've been getting, and getting input from our school leaders and our reading specialists, we elected to move away from it.
And so part of the contract is for professional development, so that's going to be for those pre-K through two teachers?
Pre-K through?
Pre-service week?
Yes, ma'am.
And ongoing for the year to make sure that's used?
Yes.
Because I know when we, when, when I helped outlay iReady, when it first hit, it was cumbersome and it was burdensome, and we did ongoing all throughout the year. So I just want to make sure that as we move, that we'll have that same level of support with Waterford.
Absolutely.
Is it more user-friendly for the teachers than what?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We've had Waterford in our preschools for the last two years, and we've seen market increases in our P A L scores for our preschool students.
Okay.
And overwhelming support from our preschool teachers and administrators. I also polled the elementary principals, asking them if they would like to have Waterford, and got a unanimous agreement that they would for their K through two programs.
Okay.
Our initial reason for implementing iReady was that we did not have a reading program where we could measure student literacy.
Diagnose.
And we still are looking for one. But that program was not embraced by the schools, and it was cumbersome. And in looking at the data that we received from it, it was not giving us the type of measurable, measurable growth that we had initially anticipated.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one, I'm sorry, can I piggyback? I've heard that Cool Math is no longer going to be available after January.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have another thing in place? Cool Math for, because I know my, my, my little one likes to get on and play Cool. I don't understand the math behind it, but it seems to help him. So I'm just wondering if there's anything out there for math, and do we need to be looking at that? And you don't have to answer that right now.
We are looking at it, and we do have some things, but we don't have anything specific right now, but I know that we are looking at it.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I have a question for Mr. Falk, or anyone else that could answer it. If we can, I'd like to get an answer, possibly at the next meeting. As far as the employee health and dental insurance, I know we had a discussion earlier with regards to HSAs, and that, you know, part of that is that each employee would get a thousand dollars to move forward. My question is, do we know if that is offered? Is that like a standard offering in other school divisions? Or does someone offer more than that? Or do we know?
Other school divisions do have HSA programs. I couldn't tell you exactly how much they give employees. Scott may be able to answer that.
The average that we found, Mr. Lamb, is a five hundred dollar one-time deposit during your first year of enrolling in an HSA program.
Is that including family?
That's all, that's per employee. If you enroll in an HSA, average is about five hundred dollars, first-time deposit, one-time deposit during your first year of enrollment.
Thank you.
And comparatively, if I could just brag on us a little bit, comparatively speaking, our health plan ranks up among the best of Region Two health plans. Our overall insurance offerings are among the best.
Ms. Schumacher?
Question, have we ever considered partnering up with the city of Portsmouth as far as for healthcare?
It's been mentioned in casual conversation, as, from what I know, the last we checked, their benefits are not as generous as ours.
Correct.
And their overall cost, I believe, would bring our cost higher.
And the reason why I ask is because if you do that, it actually does lower.
Yeah. It does. Generally, the larger your pool, the lower your overall cost.
Correct.
Your cost per member and your rates. However, I don't think our plans are on pair with offerings, with coverage and offerings. I think ours is more, a more generous plan.
We actually have a better plan than the city. Ms. Schumacher, we actually have a better plan than the city. And we looked at it years ago and tried to bring it together, because you're right, consolidating it, but it just, it never happened.
Okay.
But our plan ended up being better.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. All right, next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. As you all know, Friday was our last day of school, so this is the last report for this school year, and I want to thank our students and staff for outstanding 2018-19 school year. Special congratulations to Tenaya and the rest of the high school graduates, and we had a great time Saturday at the, at the TED. I thought each of the ceremonies went extremely well. As Lauren has shared, we've got a lot of feedback on Facebook and Twitter, and families can still see their photos from graduation as well. You can also re-watch it on our YouTube page. So we've already began preparation for the 19-20 school year. Some of you may have seen by way of social media, we had the annual Teacher Academy earlier today, and we had about two hundred participants that were in attendance. And our thanks to Richard Byrne, the author of Free Technology for Teachers, who served as the keynote speaker. In addition to getting ready for next year, I want to make sure that families of the preschoolers are aware of upcoming registration dates. Families with children who will be four years, four years old, on or before September thirty, now will have sessions to register for preschool, beginning Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, and through Tuesday, June twenty-fifth.
Beginning Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, and through Tuesday, Ju, July thirtieth, staff will be at the Title One Parent Center every Tuesday and Thursday from ten a.m. to noon and between one and three p.m. to help families fill out their preschool applications. The only exception is Thursday, July fourth, as the center will be closed. A reminder to families, we're opening our summer hour schedule, we're on our summer hour schedules now, so all schools will be closed on Friday. So as I complete my report, I want to thank the Board for its leadership and support for this school year. We appreciate all that you do for the children and the city of our schools. And we're excited to reconvene at our next meeting on the retreat. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Zacherson?
Thank you. And Dr. Bracy, thank you for all you did this year. I'm looking forward to those accreditation numbers. Also, I was wondering with the schedule of events, can we communicate it to the principals to send information to Kathy? Because I know we missed, uh, several events this year and I know some principals do know to send it to Kathy, but can we communicate to that? Because I didn't know about the athletic signing at all. So, just, can we get more communication on that and the graduations as well?
Okay. Well, we'll make sure that we, we have a calendar and that'll begin, I'm sure, with the orientation schedule, um, at the beginning of the year so that you'll know where you need to be. I'm sure Mr. Barnes is gonna try to break his record from the promotional ceremonies, graduations. I'm sure he will be at every school's orientation.
Right. Thank you.
All right. The next item is consideration to authorize us, Division Superintendent, to hire teachers and other critical personnel, July and August 2019. Board, what is the Board's pleasure? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board Members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Next item is consideration to approve certain school board policy. You've had a chance to review those. What is the Board's pleasure? Motion? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Board Members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll have Board, Board Members' comments. Do I, I don't see anybody, any comments from Board Members? Oh, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Um, I, I just have one question.
Sure.
And again, if, um, if we don't have an answer tonight, that's fine. We can try and come up with an answer later with this. There's been some, some teachers that has brought this up and I know that we talk about it all the time in teachers' lounges and so forth with this. I, I'm curious, do we have classroom budgets? Meaning, does each classroom have a budget that they can use for, say, if they wanted supplies of some sorts? Or do we not have this? I know some teachers said at one time we had it, but now they're not aware of it. So, I mean, if they're not aware of it and we have it, maybe that's just a communication thing. Or if we don't have it, is there a possibility that we can look at, um, putting that back into the budget, um, for, if we can't do something for next year, definitely the year at, uh, years after that?
Mr. Lamb, in the budget, the, the principals, um, submit a budget for what they need at their school level.
Right.
And then they allocate that money to their staff at whatever, at their discretion. So there is a pot of funds that they can use and it's based on what the principals submit to us during the budget process.
So then, is there a way then that we can better communicate that? Because it seems as though there are some teachers that are not aware that they have access to, um, classroom funds. Or, or maybe it's not being communicated that that pot of money can go, is a classroom-designated funds. Because right now, there are some that would, that said that, you know, they, they're being told that there's just no money. So, again, I think just for future reference, if we can make it clean to where that possibly each classroom, and I, and I get it, that's a lot of money, but that, just something for these teachers to be able to have so that they're not having to pay out as much out of their own pocket.
Sure. We can remind the principals at, at our sessions over the summer to make sure that as they're having their staff meetings, let those, those teachers know exactly what's available to them and then they get that information to them so that they can make those purchases.
Thank you.
Mr. Falk? Uh, how do teachers order their instructional supplies, like paper, crayons, their first-grade pa, uh, once upon a time, teachers had to submit their, uh, instructional order and each teacher got, I think it was a hundred and fifty dollars. And that was budgeted at the, uh, the central level. And then the principals had their own, uh, school budget, which was separate from instructional supplies. So how do teachers get their, their instructional supplies like crayons and various things?
They would work through their school office with that money, because the money is allocated to the school itself. Um, and so then they would make orders through the school office of those items that they're requesting.
How much does each teacher receive for instructional supplies, I guess is what I'm asking?
That's up to the discretion of the principal at each building.
Well, then that should?
So it's not a flat amount to each person. Each principal has the discretion of handling that at their building level.
That needs to be across the board. Every teacher in this school system needs to have, uh, funds for instructional supplies and they should not have to worry about buying crayons and pencils and all these things out of their own budget. I mean, that needs to be across the board. And I mean, if principals are not asking for that, then teachers obviously are gonna have to go out and buy them. That, we need to look into that. I, I was under the impression that we did have a budget, teachers had a budget for instructional supplies, separate from what they, what you're calling instructional materials. Those are two separate things, supplies and materials. But we need to make sure that every teacher has the same amount.
And that is probably an administrative issue that we need to address with principals individually and collectively, something that we can continue to reinforce and monitor. I think the issue is that we haven't monitored that. I can assure you that from my office, I have supplemented schools for instructional supplies. I've even had teachers, uh, email me directly and ask for supplies and I've purchased them for them. I stress to my coordinators and supervisors that when they are in schools, if there are individuals who need supplies, we can, we can have those available for them. So we will continue to have a process for that in the fall and hold principals accountable for that. Uh, because the money is allocated in their budgets and especially in our Title One schools where we do have funding specifically, uh, to provide those instructional supplies. So, um, that's something that we need to address administratively with our, with our leadership.
Because when the principal, when the teachers arrived in August, those supplies were in their classrooms.
They should be in their classrooms, yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Lamb?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Parent. Um, as I was sitting here and listening to you, in fact, um, in, in one of the conversations that came up, um, that's the exact number that was actually said, that was that at one time, each one of our classrooms had a hundred and fifty dollars allocated to it. And I thought to myself, wow! Because, um, where I'm at, I don't think I have, you know, that much allocated to my classroom. But, um, and, you know, Dr. Nguyen said, and I'm sure Dr. Bracy's gonna follow up, that that's gonna be followed through, but it does concern me that if you're telling me that there's two separate categories for this and that this is supposed to be going on and this is not going on, um, that, that's very concerning because we're asking, again, the number's been thrown out here, a hundred and fifty dollars. You, I mean, you get a two, two hundred and fifty dollar tax deduction, uh, a, as a teacher, I, as well, but we all know that the national average that you spend is about four hundred and fifty-three dollars on average. So, I, I'm a little concerned with what's being said, that that is not being done or communicated as clearly. So yes, I would, um, strongly ask that, um, the building administrators and principals will follow through, um, with that. Because, you know, if we've got teachers coming to us and saying, we had it at one time and now we don't, and you're saying that it is there, there's obviously an issue with that.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. And as you stated, Chair, at one time, there was a hundred and fifty dollars per, um, I think one year it went down to a hundred. And then I think my last year I worked here, it went collective as a department, depending on how big your department was, to anywhere between six and eight hundred dollars. But what I would really like to have is a follow-up at retreat with what we are projected for each classroom to have. You know, I mean, even if we start out at a hundred dollars. Uh, the next piece I'm gonna ask is at one time, we had, um, an agreement with Office Max, um, Office Depot, I know that they're together, that teachers could sign up through them and even with their personal checking account, get the school discount because they were a Portsmouth Public School employee. So, um, to help out with the classroom fund, number one, but also, two, to look, uh, whoever we do business with now, whether it's Staples or Office Depot, Office Max, to see if we can get, um, it doesn't, if it can't be the school discount, but can we get a deeper discount because they are a public educator and because we have a contract with them? That should help alleviate some. I'm, I'm not gonna say I can, I can do it all. But I also know that anything that we can give teachers will help parents out as well. Because you do have those parents that get the supply list and it's double and triple what you would normally buy for one kid because you're supplementing and filling in gaps. So, um, but I would like to see a follow-up and a deeper discussion, if we need to have it, at retreat about what our, what our teachers can get based on what our projected budget is now. And I'm not gonna even begin to ask you to, you're good, Mr. Falk, but not off the top of your head, can you do that? For our two thousand, you know, some odd classroom teachers or whatever it is.
I'm pretty sure it could.
But I mean, if we can follow up with that, but also, too, if you can check with whoever our supplier is. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Barnes? Um, as you know, I'm live on Facebook, so one of the, um, principals wanted me to express something on this topic. She said, "My thoughts on the classroom budgets. The problem is teachers have to ask if they need something. Each month, I give my teachers paper and supplies, but if it's something specific, they simply need to ask." Principals have to communicate that.
Thank you, Principal.
All right. Ms. Williams?
I, I just wanted to share that when you go to Office Max or those, we are set up in their system. Because whenever I go there, they ask me, I can put my phone number or whatever. And they say, "Are you with Lakeview or the Portsmouth School?" So it is set up that you do get the discount, because I was there yesterday. And so that is the part.
I think we need to communicate it better.
Yes. You just have to let them know.
Mr. Falk? Who orders? I'm not talking about instructional materials, that's different. But who orders the instructional supplies like, I don't wanna call it Xerox paper or but duplicating paper and pencils and crayons and things like? Who, do we not still order that, uh, from the purchasing department? Do they not order that? Or does individual principals have to order that?
Individual principals would order that. Because everybody has different preferences.
I understand that.
Right.
But first-grade teachers are first-grade teachers and kindergarten teachers are kindergarten teachers. They need certain cray, crayons. And you're gonna save a lot of money by, you're gonna save money by having a, a bulk, uh, purchasing, where every principal's gonna have to do that on their own. Great, Dave? Lamb?
We got rid of the warehouse.
Right. Warehouse.
I know that, but we should have, I know that, but there ought to be a way that you can, never mind. No, I understand that, but, anyway, there's a way you can save money. Get the teachers, make, all right. Anybo, any other, oh, Ms. Allen.
Um, I just wanna make sure that, uh, the Board is aware that the CSEP report is currently in Board Docs.
Oh, thank you.
Notable news from the CSEP report, congratulations to Ms. Sarah King from Parkview Elementary School on being named the CSEP ASP EBI CS Teacher of the Year from the city of Portsmouth. And congratulations to Ms. Casey Sipo from Parkview Elementary School on being named overall Teacher Assistant of the Year for the ASP EBICS program. For those that are gonna read the report online, I did include a synopsis of what each